I'd like to call to order the regular meeting, Monday, February 8, 2016, is now 6:00 PM. Please join Councilmember Campbell in the Pledge Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow your head as I pray? Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, and for substance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. In the Scriptures you have said that the citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, that you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for this council assembled, and for the various levels of city officials. I am asking that you would graciously grant us wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and the issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is an honest disagreement, and personal peace in our lives and joy in our tasks. I pray for the agenda set before us tonight. Please give us an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in our beloved city of Goodyear. We pray and ask you, Lord, for protection for our military, for our police, for our firefighters in our state and nation. We pray for peace, protection, and strength in their homes. In your heavenly name, amen.
Amen.
Well, if God heard that, that's an exceptional prayer. So, thank you very much, Councilwoman Campbell. All right, we're going to go to, as I look, we're all here. So, we'll go to the communications. We have two on the items tonight, and the first one is Jennifer Lawless, Benavilla Senior Director of Marketing, will present select findings from their 2015 feasibility study and an update on the nonprofit expansion. Christina Plant, Neighborhood Services Coordinator, to present and introduce.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. You may remember back when I first started with the city in April of a year and a half ago.[200.01][200.01](Laughter) I gave a presentation on the human services needs of our Goodyear residents, and we all expressed an interest and a desire to keep a finger on the pulse of need among our residents. And since census data needs a few years to catch up to make it a worthwhile source for updating, and Benavilla did a feasibility study recently, I thought that you might be interested in hearing what some of their findings were in terms of the aging population in Goodyear. So, Jennifer Lawless.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you, Mayor Lord and council. Thanks for having me here this evening. I'm just going to jump right in because I know we want to move fairly quickly. So, just to let you know, we did a feasibility study last year from April to December. I was in charge of this study, which is why I'm here presenting. We wanted to understand if we needed to, if there was a need for our resources in North Peoria and the Southwest Valley. Benavilla's been around for 35 years in Surprise, in the Sun City areas. We serve thousands of people a year with free services, but we had calls from city members asking us to come look at their communities, and we wanted to see if there was, if that was a feasible move for us. So, that's what we did. The reasons for doing that was our mission is, you know, we're always trying to help strengthen communities. And so, if there's other people not doing that work and we're available to do it, we try to help. So, national trends in aging, that's where we started, and I just want to point out the big one. In 2050, which is, you know, a little 30-some years away, the population age 65 and over is going to be almost double what it has been. So, that's a large senior population. We all know it's happening, but this is just some data that we presented to our board. The costs of aging are also going up. As you can see, in 2014, $91,000 a year for a care facility was the average nationwide, and it has climbed twice the rate of overall inflation in the last five years. So, it's very expensive to age today. Also, most people want to stay at home, having said that. So, homeowners that are 65 older, 75 and older are growing faster than the U.S. average. And living alone has supplanted living with relatives for women 75 and older. I don't know if you're aware, but most women that are 75 and older also live in poverty once they get to that point. It's a very common statistic, but along. So, we talked a little bit about how kids are helping out with their, adult children are helping out with their parents. And then getting into Arizona, our population overall of 65 and plus is almost 14%. Our uninsured is about 18%, and our 65 and plus living in poverty is almost 8%. So, we're getting calls from area agency on aging. We're getting calls from different agencies for the services that we offer or the resources that we have. So, we're really feeling that at Benavilla. We also spend, on Medicaid spending, it's almost $10,000 a year per person. Right now, 930,000 Arizona residents receive Medicare. And that's Medicare, and then over a million receive Medicaid. So, I mean, you guys know this. It's a big expense that our state bases. Area Agency, who I spoke with at length, sees the need for these services in our areas of North Peoria and the Southwest Valley. You can see that list. It's quite long. And then in the West Valley, 30% to 40% of West Side homes will continue to be fed by retiring and semi-retiring baby boomers. So, we have, including Vistancia Trilogy, and then Verado, Buckeye, and Austraea, specifically mentioned in this Arizona Republic article. So, right now, these are the stats for our area. Just to get you up to date on that, about 26% is over 50 living here. We get calls, about 15 a month for services in the Southwest Valley that we currently haven't been serving, and we have about six clients who live in the area. According to the republic, there are many multi-generational homes present in Goodyear, almost 2,000. So, that's adults taking care of their parents that are 55 to 70 or 75-plus. This is a little bit about each community. We did a random survey, an email survey of residents in this area, and these were the top five needs that they identified. This was done by email through the Daily News Sun. And then we did a professional survey for 21 community stakeholders that we met with, and then the case managers who managed just this area, and these were their top areas. There's another long list of things that they see. Transportation's on the top. I'm sure that's not the first. You guys have heard about that. So, I moved quickly. I might have moved a little too quickly there, but I guess there's a lot of stuff to go over. The bottom line is, is we determined that there needed to be more information and referral based on all this information. Caregiver support, home services, which for us is things like free grocery shopping, free transportation to medical appointments, helping people with light handyman work. And then our adult day services, which are, you know, a program where people can come for the day with their loved one who can't be at home alone. There are other organizations here in the area doing other great work, but there's such a need that it seems as if there's plenty to go around in terms of, you know, meeting needs. So, what we decided to do is our next step. Hacenda del Rey in Litchfield Park has donated some office space to Benavilla, free of charge. You know, God bless them, we're a nonprofit. And this office opened January 1st. Currently, I and my coworker Linda, who's the Director of Volunteer Services, work in that office one day a week. So, she recruits volunteers. I look for clients, and we're looking also for Board of Director members. But just trying to get the word out there that we're offering the free home services at this time. So, that's how we're starting. We think that that need for us is the easiest to meet with the littlest expense. They're volunteer services. Volunteers come and are willing to do that. You know, we're looking for down-the-road future support. But the bottom line is, is, you know, for you guys, just that you know there's a lot of need here in Goodyear as your 50-plus communities start aging in place and aren't able to do things, like the Care Bear is not able to do as much as they once did, and those kinds of things. Agencies like ours are here to help hopefully step in and help. So, do you have any questions for me?
Thank you very much. Council comments, questions? Yes, Carolyn, Councilman Holman, sorry.
Can you kind of describe what benefits you can offer our residents from, I know your services are limited at this time to the funding?
Well, currently, the services we can offer in, we're starting with Goodyear and Litchfield Park. We want to be able to expand these services to Buckeye, et cetera, all the Southwest Valley cities. And I'm a Litchfield Park resident, so I'm very familiar with the area. But right now, we're just doing those free home services that are grocery shopping, transportation to appointments, and again, these are all free. We vet the volunteers. They're fingerprinted and cleared. They're well-trained. So, all those services are available for any Goodyear resident to call upon that doesn't have another means to do that. We don't ask for an income qualifier. We just say, is there another way that you could do this at this time? And if they say no, then we say, we'll help, we'll get a volunteer. So, that's, we'll come do assistance with handyman service, light business assistance if someone needs help understanding their computer or just sorting out receipts, even those kinds of things. We've got great volunteers up in our main campus, and surprise, our volunteer force is almost 1,000 strong. So, we're looking to start building that. We're at 12 down here, but we're getting there, you know, we've only been here a month. So, yeah, that's a great question that I answer for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Councilman Osborne?
I just wanted to say thank you, and, you know, welcome to the Southwest Valley. I've heard, you know, many, many things that you've done for years further north. So, you know, we appreciate you being here, and I'm sure that as things start to roll out, we'll be able to talk with you a lot more. So, appreciate the information that you gave.
Thank you so much.
Councilman Lord, Vice Mayor Lortano.
I want to echo that thank you because clearly there is a need here, and we've talked about the need for our community as well. If someone is interested in volunteering, how would they get a hold of you, or who should they talk to, or, you know, how can we do that to connect? Because we've got great volunteers in this city.
Yes, I agree with that. We have a general phone number. We have a phone line set up at Hacenda del Rey, but it also rings through on our phone up at Surprise Campus. So, if we're up there, you can reach us anytime. We do trainings down here in Litchfield Park. We can go even off-site, like if, you know, someone was in Goodyear and wanted to meet in Goodyear, we could set that up. So, we're very flexible. Linda will attest to that. She's over there. She manages that very well. So, they can set that up very easily. Yeah.
Other questions? Councilman Pazillo?
Again, I just want to echo you, thank you. But on a similar note, so I don't forget, I know we have what a Yana program, right? It's selective. If we could at some point get an update. It's been a while since I think we got an update on that. It would be nice, the piggybacks on what we're doing, you know, for our, those that need assistance in our community. It would be nice to get an update on that as well.
Well, now that you brought that question up, do they partner with them every now and then with Benavilla at all? Have they done that? No? Okay, all right.
Rose Beals and I have been doing back-and-forth voice messages for a while. We've met, but it's been a number of years. But we definitely intend to connect with her. We don't want to duplicate service that you're already doing. We just want to support that.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Well, you know, I visited Benavilla a few years back, okay? So, I toured the entire area and all the benefits you have and how good they are. And I did bring it back to the city because I thought it was very beneficial, especially your daycare Alzheimer. But I was always stricken by the fact that you could do the transportation. They're privately owned cars.
Right.
And people volunteer their own cars, and that's always kind of a sticky wicket a little bit. So, there's the insurance, there's all the things, the liability that goes with that.
Right.
So, I'm just curious if, how did you work through those problems?
That's a great question, and actually, if you're comfortable with this, and I'm putting you really on the spot, Linda.
Yeah, I would like to hear that.
She manages that program, so why don't get it from the expert?
Okay.
Linda Salea.
Hello, Linda.
So, we do have an insurance coverage that covers them as a non-owned auto access coverage through Benavilla, and we also have the liability insurance that covers the volunteer should they get, and, you know, have an accident, get injured while they're volunteering their time.
Okay, well, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Yes, Councilwoman Campbell, I'm sorry.
If we do refer folks for transportation, are you prepared to give them rides right away, or are you going to be putting them on a waitlist, or do you have volunteers standing by to do this? Because once we get the word out, you will undoubtedly receive some calls.
We do. So, how it works is, you know, we have volunteers. So, for us, it's scheduling those volunteers along with the needs of the clients. We do have volunteers ready to work, though, in the Southwest Valley, willing to do transportation. When volunteers come in, we train them on all of those services so that, you know, they might have a preference, but we like to let them know they might be called upon to do any of those free services. So, we do have people ready. I can't guarantee that if someone calls, it might not take a bit. The more notice, the better, but we really do our best to connect that client up with the volunteer right away.
How much notice do you need?
What do you think, Linda?
One week notice, okay. I'm very familiar with your program. I'm Chairman of the Area Agency on Aging Board of Directors. So, I'm very familiar with what my agency cannot provide, and I'm very familiar with what Care Bears in Pebble Creek can't provide because I'm also a Care Bear Coordinator. We do not do Meals on Wheels. We do not have adult daycare, and we can't offer what you do because we are a 501(c)(3)(2), but we're very small, and we're only for the Pebble Creek community itself. We don't go out of it, other than take people to doctor appointments. But I'm really interested in your transportation because that is an issue that we have a lot of folks that need rides to doctor appointments, and we have folks that can no longer drive. So, we'll certainly refer them out to your agency, and then hopefully y'all will be able to help them.
I do, and I do thank you, Wally, or Councilmember Campbell.
It's okay, I'm Wally. I'm Wally.
We allow that.
I know. I've definitely known you and been in meetings with you for a long time, so thank you so much for your service.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to let you know that what we offer is what we call assisted transportation, which means we will wait at the doctor's appointment or the medical appointment. We don't leave. We wait until the person's done, and then we bring them home. We can stop for prescriptions if that's something that's needed. It makes us, you know, a little different from someone who just needs someone to drop them off. So, it is just a little bit different program. And we do have someone from the Care Bear's Board on our council.
I know you do.
Yes, our advisor council. Thank you.
So, do you have the capability to transport handicap folks, or is it, they have to be ambulatory?
I'm going to turn to Linda again. She's got all the answers.
Better come to the microphone, please. We have people that do listen once in a while. It's council meeting.
The preference is toward ambulatory. But we do train certain folks that are able to have wheelchair-accessible vehicles or have capabilities to, like, put the walker in the vehicle.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you very much. That'll be one question they ask us when we tell them that you're offering the service. They'll say, well, can they take me, and I'm in a wheelchair, or I'm in a motorized chair, and that'll help us. So, thank you, and thank you for all you're doing.
Yeah, well, it's our pleasure, and the unique thing is, is matching that volunteer. So, we might have a volunteer that can do that. You just might, yeah.
Well, I just want to say thank you for the feasibility study. Unlike Wally, we live in the same neighborhood, but I have a blinder up, okay? And when I read the stats, and I think of myself and where I am in life, it was pretty startling. Well, it was good. Pretty good health compared to this. But on the other hand, it's startling what the cost is.
Yeah.
And I think that even people that are very into their budgets and their future planning, the increase has been so drastic that it doesn't cover that. So, I think there's been a lot of really responsible senior citizens out there, and we looked at these things. But when you do see the numbers, and I saved this, I sent it, actually, I sent it to my older daughter.[1200.44][1200.44](Laughter) Because it's one of those things that young people, younger, have to really be prepared for because this was startling to me. So, thank you, and I really think somehow there must be some partnership in here, something that if nothing else, your neighborhood, possibly Cantomea, and just regular, you know, regular citizens in regular communities. Well, my only fear is it'll be abundance of calls.
Yeah.
And you will find yourself in that position of having to make some choices. And for that, I'm going to apologize right ahead of time because we don't have the facilities here in Goodyear to meet those needs, so.
So, Mayor, could we put that on our website?
We need to check that.
Can that go on our website?
So.
Mr. City Manager, maybe?
Well, let's just, yeah, somebody answer that question whether or not this could go on our website.
Underneath the Good Neighbor, or Neighborhood Services page, under Resources and Links, there's AZ211, which helps you find.
I'm on that board, too. I forgot. Sorry.
Great organization, which helps you find all kinds of organizations versus just preference to one, so that we don't wind up having an incomplete list.
Well, I'm just, so many people don't go to your Neighborhood Services page, is all I was saying. If we find out this program is really successful and we have the volunteers to back up the demand, perhaps we could put a blurb on a website because most folks will just go to the city website and look. It's hard to train them to go to either 211 or to Benavilla's page, or even to your page, Christine, although I love your page. It's very good.
And we did try to help recruit for their volunteers and for people who need services through the Good Neighbor Alert.
Yeah.
And our Faith Community Roundtable, and we'll continue to do that.
Great, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming time. Wally, thank you for all you're doing in that area.
You're welcome.
It seems like you're really.
I'm getting old. So, I'm looking at all the services.
Can I say this? You're not alone.[1334.23][1334.23](Laughter) I may use that term. All right, let's go on to the next one. The staff will provide counsel with an update, and this is exciting, on the upcoming Tale of Two Cities Parade and Festival, scheduled for February 20, 2016. David, Side Parks and Recreation Manager, David?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to provide the update on the upcoming Tale of Two Cities Parade and Event. This year's event will take place on Saturday, February 20, and it will, once again, run along, the parade will go along Thomas Road, and will conclude at the Austraea Mountain Community College campus for the actual festival. This slide shows a few of the major themes of this year's program and event. It's the Fifth Annual Partner Program with the City of Avondale. When the planning committee came together and wanted to come up with a theme, we really wanted to focus on something that the community and the area can be proud of, something that brings us all together, and something that provides opportunities. And out of those discussions, the theme of education really came to the forefront. So, we really feel strongly with our community partners, and having a strong educational commitment to those partners, we can definitely benefit the community. Out of that, Parade Grand Marshal Dr. Betsy Hargrove was contacted, and she graciously accepted to be our Parade Grand Marshal. She's the Superintendent of Avondale Elementary School Districts and a very close partner with the City of Goodyear and the Parks and Recreation Department. Out of that education theme, it's a natural connection to reach out to the Arizona Science and Technology Groups, as well as STEM Partners that operate throughout the schools. Long-term partner Luke Air Force Base, a natural fit, they will support us with the colors and actually lead the parade on the event day. And we do have three bands to date that are committed to participate. So, it's hard to have a parade without a band, so we have a few of those for everybody's enjoyment. The ever-popular naturalization ceremony will also take place. I'll highlight that in a couple more slides down the road. And then we'll have up to 80 community partners and vendors, not only with the parade, but taking part in the actual festival itself. This gives a kind of a general outline of the timeline. So, once again, the morning will kick off with the Dignitary Breakfast. Austraea Mountain Community College Culinary Division, once again, is sponsoring that. It's a way for the elected officials from both communities to come together, as well as some state representatives that we've issued some invitations to. The actual parade itself will start at 10:00 AM. It will start from Litchfield Road and Thomas, and head east along Thomas, eventually ending up at Austraea Mountain Community College. The rendition you see there, that's a sketch of Goodyear's parade entry. Actual construction of that float began today, as a matter of fact. So, staff will be working on creating that and getting that polished up for the event on the 20th. Immediately following, approximately 11:00 AM of the parade, the festival will begin with some stage entertainment, starting shortly thereafter at about 11:15. Naturalization ceremony, I do want to talk about that a little bit. So, that's quite an exciting part of the program. If you've never been to that, or if anybody in the public has never taken part, I'd really encourage people to take part in that. It can be a very moving experience to see those take the pledge and the oath to become naturalized citizens of the United States. So, that ceremony is handled by the United States Citizenship and Immigration Services. They determine eligibility and go ahead and conduct that for us, but it's really a moving experience. So, our partner mayor from Avondale, Ken Wise, will deliver the welcome on that. Luke Air Force Base will present the colors. We have a local vocalist from Verado High School, Alexandria Smith, who will do the National Anthem. The Pledge of Allegiance will actually be performed by Avondale Elementary American Dream students. And the keynote speaker will be Ms. Dawn Wallace, who's the Education Policy Advisor from the Governor's Office. So, very distinguished program there, and our very own Mayor Lord will close it out with closing remarks and comments. So, very excited about that. Really want people to take time to make it a point to attend that if possible. And then the actual festival itself will conclude at approximately 3:00 PM. This slide here gives everyone an idea of the map, very consistent from years past, but we do want to let the public aware of the road closures that take place. So, if you can see that red portion, that's a hard closure beginning at 7:00 AM till noon. So, if those are in the area, definitely take note of that. There are some additional closures that happen a little bit later in the morning, the light blue shaded area, that's from 9:00 to noon, and that really gets us prepared for our event. Our staging takes place at the Goodyear Community Park, and then we get everybody lined up and ready to go at 10:00 AM. The other thing I want to mention are the three major parking areas. So, our partners from the church, our partners from the Community College, and then Palm Valley Elementary School as well are great areas, free of charge to park, and all of the events and parade are free of charge as well. So, with that, I'm going to zoom into a little bit tighter shot. We're going to go to the actual campus there. That gives you a little bit of an idea. Might be a little bit of an eye test, but you'll have a general idea of the layout. We have various vendors and partners assigned throughout the open turf area. We have two main stages that will have various entertainment and performance groups, and then we will also have a food court where people can purchase food, beverages, and that sort of things. Very popular area is our military display area. You can see that on the south portion of the slide. So, with that, you'll see in the coming weeks, we're going to start hitting the marketing and promotion aspect of the parade and festival pretty hard. This is a sample of one of the flyers that will be out there. We'll have spots on radio. We'll have spots on the I-10 billboard. You'll see similar flyers such as this at various bus shelters and various digital media reminders and hits as well from our Facebook, Instagram, and so forth. So, the only thing, my 10-day forecast, although the weather's very mild this week, it only gets me up to Wednesday. So, we're very hopeful and optimistic that we have ideal weather, but it is a rain-or-shine event, so definitely keep that in mind. And with that, I would be more than happy to entertain any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you, David. Comments?
Just one question.
Yes, Councilman Osborne?
Did you, I think I saw a poster at City Hall. Have you kind of distributed some posters around to some of the grocery stores and things like that to put them in the windows?
Absolutely. We've made efforts. We first off wanted to hit all of our city buildings and the libraries and those type of facilities, but definitely outreach to the schools and the community partners as well.
Thank you.
That's it. Well, thank you very much, and we're all excited about it. It's always a fun day.
Absolutely.
And the ceremony after for me is moving because immediately when I'm involved in those ceremonies. those ceremonies, I think about my parents, who came from Greece at different times, and my grandparents, and I just know how they must have felt when they finally got that piece of paper in hand, that they were United States citizens. So, yeah, I look forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda items. Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor.
Or is there anybody in the audience that didn't fill out a card that would like to speak? All right. So we'll go on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read Consent Agenda Items 6.1 through 6.4 by title only, please?
Item 6.1, approve draft minutes from a regular meeting and a special meeting held on January 25th, 2016. Item 6.2, approve the final plat of Palm Valley 303 East, Phase A subdividing 373 acres into five lots and four tracts generally located between Indian School Road and Camelback Road, east of the Loop 303, within the Palm Valley 303 Planned Area Development, subject to the general notes and phasing notes stated on the final plat and stipulations. Item 6.3, accept three specialty warranty deeds and three public utility easements from RP PV3 LLC and RP PV4 LLC for portions of Cervel Avenue located north of Charles Boulevard. Item 6.4, accept the dedication of an emergency access easement to provide for emergency access across a portion of Tract A of Estrella Parcel 58.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Councilman, Councilman Campbell?
Mayor, I'd like to remove 6.4, please, for discussion for a moment. I have a question.
All right, so you want us to go ahead and vote on the others?
Sure.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, please.
Okay, so 6.4, is that what you said?
Yes.
All right. So then, could I have a motion for 6.1 through 6.3, please?
So moved.
I heard a motion by Councilman Pizzillo and a second by Councilman Stip. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Pass the 7-0.
All right, so a presentation on 6.4?
Please. I have a question. I have a couple of questions, in fact. Do you have a map of this area that we can take a look at? I'm nervous now anytime you're going to tell me you want council to approve an emergency access area. Yeah, I'm looking. And where's it going to be? Where's the access going to be?
Emergency access easement is through what they call Area 58, which comes through right in this, make sure I get the right one, right through here into this cul-de-sac. There's a cul-de-sac here that comes along the, I believe it's Irene.
Cantor Irene?
Yes.
So this is going to be like a driveway with a chain across it?
No.
Is it going to be a wide-open driveway so that there's no discussion?
It hasn't been fully designed at this point. This development is still in preliminary plat state.
Okay.
It will be designed later as they work through their plating for their project and through their construction plans. At that point, they'll come through and they will work with the city to come up with a design that works for both parties, or all three parties, actually, in this case, because...
As I remember, we had, we've had several of those up, assure you, is that right?
I have done a couple others in the past.
Yeah, because I've been on this dius one.
Mostly between some of the port, some of the platted areas where they need to get through it, because in these areas, we have to have two areas of ingress and egress, where there may be one primary one. In case of a true emergency, they have to, we have to have another way to get them out and get emergency vehicles in.
Well, I have no problem with that.
Right.
But, you know, we're dealing right now with a parcel of land in Goodyear where the neighbors don't want an entity to use a driveway that was specifically designated as an emergency access. So I don't want, I just want to know that if we grant this tonight, that when they develop that site, they'll develop it as an in-and-out, and we're not going to have another discussion on whether they use it or not. That's what I'm getting at. I'm trying to not...
If you can't address that, let's have someone else that can address that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I hate to be that way, but.
Rebecca Zook's going to address that.
Once, that's enough.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And yes, absolutely, this is going to be an emergency access only. It isn't a primary interest, it won't be designed as such, and it will not be used in any other form. We have worked with Newland Homes on this access point, and it is strictly emergency access only.
Okay, well, I was going to say, I have no, I don't care that it's either for everyone or emergency. I just don't want us to say it's emergency only and then have them come back in five years and say, no, now we want to use it as a driveway.
Understood.
So, okay, thank you. That's it.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wally. Then I need a motion and a second, please?
I'll move.
Mayor, you still need a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, we've got to do...
Correct, no, I'm sorry, you're correct.
Oh.
I apologize.
Okay.
Did you hear this?
Yes. It was my fault.
You want her to see a day we'd come to that. You made my evening. Thank you very much. So could I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved approval.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Campbell and a second from Councilman Holman. Roll call vote, please.
My turn now? Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Pass the 7-0.
Good. Let's go to the business item, and that is, first on the agenda is a public hearing to consider a use permit to allow the Convenient Juice, which is the Dairy Queen Drive-Thru Restaurant within the Palm Valley Cornerstone Commercial Center. So we're going to open the public hearing, and Steve Carecchia, Planner 3, will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a use permit for convenience use, and that convenience use is a Dairy Queen Drive-Thru Restaurant. The location is Palm Valley Cornerstone, and this is McDowell Road here to the north. This is the Marley's establishment here, and this is the pad right here. It's about three-quarters of an acre. And surrounding it is generally other commercial pads within the Palm Valley Cornerstone Development. All of these drives here are shared access drives. All of the parking throughout the center is shared parking. All of the uses share these items. To the north, we have Palm Valley and several existing residents to the north. This is the site plan proposed for Dairy Queen. Again, here's McDowell Road, here is the access drive. Cars will come around here, circulation will enter here. This is the main entrance to the drive-thru lane. They'll wrap around here. This is where the menu ordering board is and the speaker. They'll travel around the building, and the pickup window will be here on this side of the building facing McDowell Road. And you can see this canopy right here, and we'll look at it with the building elevations, but here you can see it in the site plan. They did configure this site with the drive-thru window facing McDowell Road, and the design guidelines generally do not permit that unless they close that drive-thru window with a canopy and screening. So they did provide an architectural canopy over the drive-thru lane covering the window and did provide screening from McDowell Road. Parking field is here to the west. Dairy Queen will have about six parking spaces within their three-quarters of an acre. The rest of the parking that they're required to have will be provided through the shared parking in the rest of the center. Proposal is that the drive-thru and the restaurant will be open from 10:00 a.m. to midnight. And these are the elevations that they're proposing. And you can see here, this is the drive-thru window here. This is the canopy element that kind of wraps around this side of the building. Here are the other elevations. We did have a neighborhood meeting on January 5th, and we did have three residents from the neighborhood to the north attend a meeting. Their main concern was lighting and noise trespassing onto their properties. The applicant did put together this drawing, and this shows basically the neighborhood to the north here, and it's a line of sight drawing. One of the main concerns was the sign on that face of the building, you know, would that cause light trespass into their homes? And this diagram showed that you had basically at least 185 feet, several trees, a landscape buffer, and then with the sign located here, it did not pose a light trespass problem. The applicant also agreed they had a LED light band that wrapped the building, that they would remove that, again, to prevent light trespass onto their building, onto the residents. And again, with the speaker located in the back here, we did not have an issue of noise trespass onto the residential area. Staff did review this application. We do find that it meets our requirements for a use permit. Staff and the Planning Commission, we are recommending approval of this use permit application. With that, Mayor, that concludes my presentation. Staff and applicant are available for any questions.
All right. I'm going to close this public hearing, okay?
Mayor, you need to ask for speakers?
Are there any speaker, I'm sorry, what?
Yeah. You need to ask for speaker, speakers?
The applicant wants to speak?
No, you need to ask for speakers before the public hearing, closing?
Oh, I'm about ready to do that.
Okay, but you've got to do it before you close the public hearing.
I'll take back that one. And it's, are there any speaker, I can do that very quickly, can't I? Okay. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. And we'll go on to the next. I'm going to now close it officially, public hearing. Could I have a motion in a second, please, to approve the request to use, for a use permit for a Convenient Juice Dairy Queen Drive-Thru Restaurant to be constructed within the Palm Valley Cornerstone Commercial Center, located at the southwest corner of McDowell Road and Dyser Road, subject to stipulations? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Holman, a second by Vice Mayor Lortano. Open for council discussion. Want to start, Tom, then? Councilman Holman?
Well, excuse me. I really am excited to have a Dairy Queen in Goodyear. This was my life when I grew up. We had a similar kind of establishment in Solana, Kansas, and by the time I was 15, I was 5% owner of the business. And so I was deeply ingrained in this kind of a product, the soft serve, and have long, have seriously longed for one in Goodyear. So from my perspective, welcome, and you'll see much of me.
Councilman Campbell?
Well, I'm from Texas, and you go to Dairy Queen on Sunday to eat. You go to Dairy Queen any day of the week to eat in Texas because it's wonderful. But I do have a question, and I'm assuming, Steve, you can answer it. I walked the site today, and is the building going to be on the other, what are you going to do about the water? I'm assuming these are big water pipes or something or other? You know, when you first turn in, are you familiar with the site? When you drive in, immediately to your right, in front of Marley's, is, you can't see it on that, hon, that's why I had to walk it, but I have a picture of it. Can you answer that for me? I just, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to figure out where you're going to put your drive-through exactly, and do you have to move those two light standards that are there? Are you going to take part of the parking there?
Well, let me first say, thank you, Mayor and Council, for giving us the opportunity to bring Dairy Queen to the community.
Well, can be sure you're, excuse me, I'm going to interrupt you. Be sure you're talking to the microphone, okay? Because I'm not hearing you well.
Okay, I thought I was, sorry.
Thank you.
My name's Brian Johns, Associate Architect. I'm the architect, and we do have the owner and the contractor here. The light, and there is a water hydrant.
Yeah.
That's in that, there's some small utilities that are in that area. We have taken that in consideration and put that into the island. That's why the island does loop back around during the construction drawings, which we've already started at risk. We've actually moved that up a couple feet to make that a little bit wider, and he reduced the size of his, the size of the walk-in cooler down a little bit to make up for that.
Okay.
So that has been taken in consideration. First, originally, I think we were going to move the hydrant, but due to cost.
Oh, I think that would be really expensive to move that because there's so much of it there. So I'm glad you could move your driveway around. It's a perfect fit, by the way, for the driveway to run against the entrance road into that shopping center, and then for your drive-thru actual window to be facing McDowell is perfect because you've got, already got the fence there, and you've got all the plants there, and it's, and the noise from the cars, they're going to drown it out. So your patio, you said it's going to have wrought iron. Is it going to be covered for the summer?
The patio that's on the front entry, yes.
Yeah.
It's going to have, it has a fairly large covered patio, one of the bigger ones that we've ever done for Dairy Queen.
Okay.
They take pedestrian, obviously, because a lot of walk-in and have an ice cream. They do take pedestrian access seriously. So this actually has a fairly large patio area that is covered, correct?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was covered.
It does have wrought iron and planters. And by you pointing out the, that those utilities that we're going, that's been the conversation of this week.
I bet it has, yeah. Well, we're happy that you're going to fill in that location. We go to Marley's a lot, and to the beauty shop, and to the 24-hour smoothie store that's always open, right on the end. So it's a perfect fit for that area. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Councilman Osborne?
Well, I just, well, first of all, thank you very much, and I can tell you that my children would say, you're 10 years too late, because they've been, we've been waiting as a family for Dairy Queen for years and years. So welcome, I'm excited to have you here. I also want to say thank you for listening to the citizens that came out to talk to you because I actually live in Palm Valley, this area, and I appreciate the fact that you're removing those lights around the top to keep it more of a residential, you know, feel to it, so it's, the lighting's not so harsh. So I really do appreciate that, and showing the line of sight for the lighting, everything. Because this has been an area that they've come out to talk to us about because you do have some very energetic areas in there. You know, I guarantee, yesterday in the Super Bowl, between Marley's and Buffalo Wild Wings and Manuel's, that center is packed. And I do really encourage you to stay partners with your fellow restaurants there because you're going to have some parking lot sharing that I know you'll all be enjoying together. So thank you very much. I appreciate, you know, the things that you guys are doing, working with the residents, and welcome to Goodyear. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Stip. I'll go that way, this way.
Not sure if this is for Steve or Christopher. The, oh, you've got the right picture of, the photo that we have here in front of us has all those trees that are in front of McDowell Road there. And for a while, it's been problematic for us hiding our businesses behind the trees. Is there anything contemplated in this application about removing or thinning or doing something that provides some visibility? Nothing worse than opening a brand-new store and having no one know that it's there.
There, Council, with the history of this center, like it was mentioned with the residential to the north, that landscape buffer was about a 40-foot buffer, and that was partly because of the residences to the north, and all the trees in there are partly for the screening. With this use, no trees are proposed to be removed.
I'm just going to interject, Phil, because that did come before us a long time ago, and that was really, the majority of the neighborhood came forward.
Is there an ability for this applicant later, if they choose to put a sign in among the trees, a low sign?
Mayor and Council, this center has a comprehensive sign package. It's multi-tenant monuments. That would have to be an amendment to a sign package that would have to come before you to request a single-user sign like that.
Okay, so now I'm really, I have a question for Christopher then. In the development mini-series that we're going to have, signage going to be part of that discussion? I don't want to, I want to do everything we can to support this business and any other business that decides to come in along one of our quote-unquote "tree-lined roads."
Yes, sir, Mayor. Council, thank you for the opportunity to address that question. During our mini-series... During our mini-series, we will not be talking about signage, because we are actually working on rewriting our sign ordinance currently. It is its own independent project that we actually are working with legal as well. If you remember, Steve and Sarah and I did a presentation to you, I think in October. We are diligently working on that and are nearly nearing completion on a draft, in which case we'll circulate it internally and then reach out to our business community to get some input. So, that is its own separate project that we will be engaging with you on conversation, but not during the mini-series. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Well, let me just ask the applicant then. Do you have any concerns about your building being hidden back there?
There are concerns when we first look at this lot, but we knew the neighborhood is going to object to it, since there are houses over there. We had to fight with DQ Corporate to get this site approved, because they were very much concerned about, first of all, the access. It was not one of the best access, and then they were concerned about the visibility. But I have confidence in this whole trade area. I'm a multi-store, DQ franchisee, and I've been looking to open in Goodyear. We got so many requests to open in this area. So, we chose this project, and we would really appreciate if the city would work with us to at least put up a smaller sign, or maybe help us trim if the residents or the neighbors are okay with that. I totally agree with you. Like you said, the worst thing that can happen to a new business is that we don't have a visibility and nobody knows about it. And DQ Corporate, when they gave us the approval, they did mention that taking off these LED light bands and not having a monument sign will not, will not be good for the business, and be prepared to advertise more aggressively to be successful in this area, especially with the, there was, I think, HST Freeze that used to be there, and El Colo Loco, they faced a very hard time being successful in that. I would really appreciate if the city would work with us in putting up a sign, or maybe help us trim down some of the trees to at least get some visibility.
Okay, so, I don't know who the question goes to.
We'll let Christopher work. Are you done asking questions?
Well, no, I think...
What more do we have to...
Well, that, is there an opportunity for us to do something, that tree trimming, et cetera? We've experienced the exact same thing along the front of this property here, where people, we don't know what it is, and we trim the trees up, and all of a sudden, things are much, much different. If you look at the shopping center that has the Walmart Neighborhood Market at Litchfield and Indian School, you couldn't tell what was back there until very recently, all the trees were trimmed way up, and now you can see that there's a store there, you can see the, actually see the sign. So, we've created a situation, I think, that may be problematic. Now, you're obviously going to build, we're all going to, you know, if we all say, "Yeah, welcome to the city," you're building anyway.
Yep, yep.
But I'd sure like there not to be a vacant, what used to be Dairy Queen in that location. We've been very fortunate that the business that has had three, I think, three different businesses in there now seems to be okay, but, boy, that gets a little shaky after a while. So, if there's something we can do as a city, I'd sure like to, I'd sure like to be supportive of that, and I don't know what that is. So, I'm looking for somebody from staff to stand up and say it's cutting the trees.
Is that something we have to decide on tonight? Because this is a total different subject matter that needs to be addressed at the time it is. It's not to be addressed tonight, in my view. I think that we, is there a way? So, I'm turning it over to staff. This is not, this is not what they're coming forward tonight. We need to get this done, and then take the suggestion back to staff and work through it. But I'm going to close this discussion up here on this subject, so I'm leaving up to you to help me out on this.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, council, thank you. We were just having a sidebar there. As part of the original approval, the trees are there, are required to be there. They're not on public right-of-way, they're on private property, and they were part of the stipulation or approval of the overall development, the cornerstone development. So, in order to trim those up appropriately, there may be some flexibility, but we need to research that, because it was really as a result of the neighborhood across the street.
Exactly right. And I do not want us making decisions here tonight without the neighborhood being notified and having every player into it. I respect the business, but, yes, go ahead.
If we, if there's an idea to change that stipulation, we need to go back through the public process and afford both points of view the opportunity.
Exactly right. Thank you. Next comment? Councilman Osborne?
Sir, and I'm sorry, because you're right behind that poll. I appreciate your concerns and your comments, and I'm a fellow business owner, and I understand where you're coming from. What I can say, though, is this is the perfect opportunity for you to continue to let the city know what your thoughts are. And as, as you've heard, as we're going through the process of sign guidelines and things like that for a city, you know, we need to hear from the businesses. So, please, you know, continue to, you know, let us hear from you on ideas and things like that. Thank you.
All comments? Okay, is the mayor, welcome. I'm looking forward to it. Sign up, sign out, trim's not trimmed, whatever. I'm just astounded at the design.
It's beautiful.
Yeah, I'm still thinking of the Dairy Queen in the '50s in high school. And our Dairy Queen is, is you got your, if you can borrow your parents' car, you went around the Dairy Queen three times, you strolled it until you found all your friends parked, and then you'd pull up next to your friends, and that was your communication. And it was always at the Dairy Queen. And that was back in the...
Are you starting a cruising club?
Back in the '50s, and it's always been a really beloved business. Everybody wants it. It doesn't matter what economic level you come from. So, I'm really thrilled that you're here. I understand about the sound, about the sign, but I do understand, and have been on this council since 2005, when I heard the community come forth. So, we have to be respectful of you and the community, and that's why I cut off the conversation tonight, because that has to be at another time when we give everybody the right to come before and talk about whether they like it or don't like it, and what concessions they'll make. And, of course, our city is always welcome. As Joanne, as Councilman Osborne said, we will have that work session on signage, which you'll learn a great deal from. So, I think all we have to do is vote on this. So, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Welcome to Goodyear. All right, now is the time for council. You have any comments or commendations, reports, or anything that's going on you want to talk about? Councilman Osborne, I mean, Campbell.
Well, Saturday was really a busy day. The heart-and-soul race was absolutely fabulous. The arts and culture event was wonderful. Loved the dancing, loved the, tried to get the car club to raffle off one of the Corvettes, but they didn't want to do that, and that was so much fun. The Desert Fest at Pebble Creek was awesome, and I've never been in so many different places with so many people. Each one had, I would think, over 1,000 people. It was just amazing. So, this week was just a really busy week, but Saturday just went over the top. So, it was great.
You got my other comments? Yes, Councilman Osborne?
Well, I just wanted to let the planning and zoning staff and development services know that I was at a function Thursday night, and this gentleman said to me, "Hey, I just moved to Goodyear, and I want you to know that I had to get a permit for my hot tub," I think it was. And he couldn't say nicer things about the process and the people at the counters. He was, he was very expressive about how he felt. And so, I thought that you guys needed to hear that, because it's wonderful to hear. We don't always hear the good things. So, that was, that was great to hear. I attended the Arizona Project Wet, and seeing all the kids there at the park was wonderful. The, thank you to everybody that, you know, Epcor and Liberty and the school district, and that was, you know, what a great way to show the kids about water. That was, that was really, really quite cool. So, that was all I wanted to say.
Any other comments down here? Well, then, I'm just going to add on to that. I thought, I thought it was extraordinary how they learned about water.
It was great.
They had so many stations you went to. You started off with the wash, you know, and then went from, it was really, it was, the kids were happy, and they were learning, and they were talking about it, and I think they remembered everything they learned that day. So, that was great. And listen, Gailene, the Loma Linda...
It was wonderful.
She, she's probably not in here tonight to get the accolades, but the staff and Gailene, it was, it was like a small county fair. It really was. There were people selling jams and different things they had homemade. The entertainment was good. It was, it was across the culture, it covered everybody, and it was a great day. And Nathan, the trees were great. The big trees are still there, and we all were hugging them, so we want to thank you for that. So, I'm turning this over to the city manager.
Mayor, members of the council, one follow-up is, there was a question on Yana, just kind of a status update, what they're doing, and we'll be getting that to council. Excuse me, I'm all choked up over that. So, we'll be providing that probably in my weekly report, or when we do get an update available for you. And then, a couple of things that were referenced, the ones that the city directly was most involved in, it was talked about, the Heart and Soul Run. And just a few points on that, 420 runners and walkers, so that was about a 28% increase over the year before. 27 vendors, about a 23% increase. And if you had a chance to see the six mascots that ran around there, YMCA Swim Club Silver Fin's Dolphin actually came away with the victory. I'm not sure what that gives them, but they have bragging rights. But part of that, we had Desert Edge High School, Millennial High School, Culvers, Fiesta Bowl, and also Texas Roadhouse. So, those were the other ones that had mascots that were in this race. Total participation, 750, so it was, it was extremely well-attended, again, about 7% more than last year. So, that's one of the, one of the goals that we have from our citizens, is more recreation events and activities, and like to see the increased participation. On the arts and culture, the trees are still trying to get their roots back in the ground after being hugged so much, but they are, that was a joke.
That's bad.
It's its second year, and we actually had 1,500 folks that attended that, 1,500 over at the park. Appreciate that. In my notes, I have the mayor and council members, Pizzillo, Stipp, and Holman, but I know other council members with other events. It was a very, very busy day, so, so not to slight anyone on that. But we had 40 folk artisans, and the car shows talked about, and then 125 kids participated in the free clay sculptures. So, really fun for the entire family, and thanks for the recognition for the Parks and Recreation staff for that. As a reminder...
Before you go on, Councilman Pizzillo had one other thing, and I made him hold off here, so go ahead.
No, just clarification. I think a yellow paper would be fine, unless somebody wants more on the Yana. I mean, a full-flow, yeah, just a yellow paper is what I was looking for.
Yellow paper, or if it's short enough, it might be in the weekly managers.
Okay, but that's, that's fine.
Right. It would not be a communications.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. And then, lastly, as a reminder, in recognition for President's Day this Monday, city offices will be closed. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was known, and that will be this coming Monday, February 15th. Mayor and council, that's all I have.
All right. Great. Well, with that, just to remind you, the next work session, a regular meeting, is on February 26, 2016. No further business, this meeting...
I have a couple of inquiries to the manager, please.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Mr. City Manager, I would appreciate us getting an update on what's being negotiated or proposed for the IGA for the paramedicine, so that we can have this conversation all along during the year, rather than the very day that they bring it before us, and then we don't understand what all is in there. If you think you could do that periodically, that would be nice. I also have a concern about us, I don't know, and I probably should have asked this privately, but I'm going to ask it anyway. I don't know, are we changing the color of our Goodyear emblem on all the vehicles, on the traffic lights, on all the clothing, on all the, everything? And if so, I'm concerned that it's going to be in excess of $200,000, $300,000, $400,000. If you're doing it all, even if it is gradually, it's a huge expense, and it's not something that council has even talked about it, been involved in it or anything, but it's just a huge expense. And the more I talk to people who have changed their logos, they're telling me how much more it costs them than what they realize, and these are, these are cities who have done it. So, that's, but you don't have to answer me, but that's just, you can answer me later.
Mayor and council member Campbell, the quick answer, and we can provide more detail, certainly can, later, quick answer is this is a soft opening, so as, for example, business cards run out, we order new ones, those are ordered at that time. It would also be if there's any, or logos that require repainting, so as we're maintaining traffic standards and things like that, it would be at that time. It's not to do a wholesale go now, it would be more as part of the maintenance, part of that, as needed, but that's what we're looking at right now.
So, what are we going to then, if we're not going to do the purple? What was the...
We're not going to, the purple is something we've...
Does the purple stay? It's now gold?
Yeah, and council member Campbell, I'd be happy to go through that in more detail with you, on what is changing, what is not, with the new standards that we have set up for that.
Okay, and I just wanted to let you know, I was very disappointed in the very, very tiny story about Phileneed in the InFocus. I know when we put Phileneed together this year, this was an extraordinary year that the staff worked hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours on, raising funds all year round, so that they could fund it. And then, we got a very generous donation of 700 gifts at the last minute, and I was told that they would do a story about that, and we got a four-sentence story in the West Valley View, and then we got a two-sentence story in the InFocus. And I just really want the residents to know what a wonderful, caring group of employees this city has, and how much they care for them, because this is the only really outreach that our employees as a whole group do in this large of a scale. And this year, they were able to get 54 families, and we had gifts left over, and the gifts were donated to whoever achieved, I forgot, somebody had all their toys stolen, and so, our city generously took bags and bags of toys to help someone else out who, I mean, it was just an extraordinary effort, and I was just so disappointed that we didn't, we read all the time that we get new businesses, that we do this, that council does that, but we don't hear the good things about what our employees do. And I just want the credit due where the credit should be due to those, to those employees. It's just an extraordinary event that is just, I don't know of any other city that does it in the magnitude that this city does it, and I'm just so proud of them. But that being said, so maybe next year, we can have a story, if we do something that extraordinary, if we get another group that'll give us 700 gifts, because that allowed us to have more people in the program, and it saved us money, literally, and it was just, it was just great. And then, I wanted to know, is there any thought that we need to have a work session on an ordinance on drones? And are we still going to talk someday about e-cigarettes? Are we just going to wait till something happens? Because I'll tell you truthfully, we're getting emails where we live, that people are, our people are flying drones where we live, and, I mean, in our, in our development. And I know there's going to be some federal stuff, but, you know, I'd like to see us proactive on something. And that's it. That's two pages worth, Brian.
Go ahead.
Mayor, members of the council, obviously, we cannot put, ask for something, put on a future agenda by consensus tonight, but certainly understand what you're saying. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else, anything? Can I hit this gavel now?
Sure.
All right, meeting adjourned.
I was going to do that last meeting, but I waited, because we, it was too late.